This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. I'm going to start with an announcement before we get into the agenda. I do see some new participants and I'm actually gonna hit the mute button just to clean up the audio. I hear some background noise. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, for please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a gavel. I don't need one because I have a mute all button. If we are not all participating successfully, or I'm sorry respectfully and successfully. I'll be forced to mute all, clean up the audio, and then give the floor to the person who should be speaking. We will now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look in one of the top corners of your screen on mine, it's the top right corner, you'll see a text bubble, cartoon text bubble. When you click that icon, you'll see a strip appear on the right side of the screen. Please type into that strip that you request to speak. I will first look to questions from those who are using a computer or the smartphone app to participate. Once I've heard from all those who are logged in digitally, I will go to the phones. If you intend to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and address. We will have an executive session at the end of this meeting. When the council moves to go into executive session, I will ask all of you who are not going to be participating in the executive session to leave the meeting. And I will then lock the meeting. Once we're done with the executive session, you will be able to come back on. Before the executive session's over, you can log into the meeting and you will be in a waiting room. When I unlock the meeting, you'll all come back in. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishbein.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Savoni.
Here.
Thank you. Can we please have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve or accept consent agenda items A through M.
Second.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Fishbein. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, I presume all ayes. The consent agenda has passed. Next on the agenda would be items removed. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Next up is the public question and answer period. Before we go into that, I'm just looking at the names who are logged in. For the benefit of the public, item eight, the presentation on the park and rec facility fee structure has been removed from the agenda. As has item nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding the transfer of 1,500 square feet of town land abutting Rin Street. So those two items are removed from the agenda. With that, is there anything for the public question and answer period? Mr. Commerford, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Bill Commerford, five Broadview Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. At the public budget hearing for the Senate Street Cemetery was brought up by both the president and the vice president that a headstone was given to them for practice. How do I find out where is the origin of this headstone and what year was given to them?
You would ask them.
Well, Mr. Gross is apparently here. And if I don't get that information, can I ask you Chairman Savoni to follow up with that?
Well, I'm not going to let Mr. Gross represent the council during the council's public question and answer period.
I didn't, I didn't ask you to. I said Mr. Gross is present, so he's a president of the cemetery. Can he, can he confirm that he'll get back to us?
I know that he is aware of your request.
Okay, so is that a yes, Chairman Savoni?
I know that he is aware of your request.
Okay, so if I don't get any answer, will you follow up?
I will ask.
Thank you.
That appears to be all we have for the public question and answer period. I'm just gonna try the phones. All right. Hearing nothing. Onto item six, Mr. Sunitelli, I see you are on the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
All right. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Thank you so much for putting that up. I appreciate it. Good evening, members of the council. I will, there's a lot going on, obviously, in the last week or so, so I tried to put together something to condense everything that's happening. Lot of positive things happening in the community at this point, so I guess we could just get right into slide two, if we could. Awesome. Thank you so much. Looking at our case, number cases for the monthly confirmed case totals, what you'll see is that we do have a drop in April, so we're falling somewhere in terms of total number of cases in town, somewhere between what we saw in September and October at this point, which is definitely a good sign of things to come. Hopefully, in the next few months, we'll continue to see a precipitous decline in our local case rates. So on that front, things are going well. Another area that things are actually starting to level off, hospitalizations are beginning to drop statewide. One of the most important factors that we measure at this point are fatalities in town. We have not had any fatalities over the last three to four weeks, so that has definitely worked out. And I think that a lot of that has contributed to the vaccination program across the state of Connecticut, as well as the targeted approach that we took early on trying to vaccinate our most vulnerable in the community. We still have ample number of tests conducted in the municipality. We have one of the highest test rates in the state or the available tests. 130,000 tests done in town since the beginning of the pandemic. We've seen a 36% decrease in the 14-day case average from 42 to 27. That's the lowest since our November 10th report. So again, we're going in the right direction at this point, and hopefully we'll continue in that direction. Again, we're looking at that map that was continuously all red, and now we're starting to see a patchwork of oranges and yellows and grays, which are showing declining case rates. And again, if we continue to see the decline that we saw last week, I would expect us to be somewhere in the oranges in the not-too-distant future if we continue to see the case rates drop. And again, I contribute a lot of this to the vaccination program done statewide as well as in town. Again, just a list of our clinics that we've completed. I don't have to get into them too much, but just to give you an idea, the volume of clinics that our office conducted, aside with all of our partners, I see JP on the line as well tonight, who was a vital partner for us even making this happen, so I have to thank him publicly again for his assistance with Masonic Care. We wouldn't have had the program that we had without their assistance. There's no question about that. So again, just getting back to the clinics, if we could jump to the next slide. What we're seeing now is we were consistently doing clinics that were in the 300, 400 numbers, and now we shifted to homebound vaccinations. That was slightly put on hold with the information that came out from Johnson and Johnson last week because that's primarily what we were using. Now with that pause being lifted, we're surveying the group of folks that we had previously had to see what their interest still is in that. If there is no interest in the Johnson and Johnson, we are looking at trying to offer Moderna in the home. It's just logistically a little different because it's packaged differently in that it comes in vials of 10 vaccines per vial as opposed to five for the Johnson and Johnson. So again, just logistically, we'd have to work a few things out, but we feel pretty good about being able to continue to offer that in the community. We actually did our, one of our mobile clinics at the Housing Authority. We did another one at the Spanish Community of Wallingford, and we're scheduled to do more on the next slide. A lot of what you're going to see in the future are second dose clinics and then starting to schedule more of our mobile clinics. We're looking at May 11th to go back to SCOW and do another estimated 200 individuals that they are helping us register at this point. So again, we are certainly offering more mobile clinics in the community and going to make those available as sites open up more for us as well. These are some of the newer maps that the state of Connecticut publishes. Just wanted to kind of put them up for the council to see. So what they've done is they've looked at the age brackets here for the breakdowns of how vaccine, vaccine was made available throughout the rollout. And so if you'll see here, and again, it's probably difficult to see, but the town of Wallingford, based on the state guidance or the state records, has 100%, 100% coverage of our 65-plus population. So you'll see in that particular chart on the left that the darker the colors, the better you are in terms of your vaccine penetration, we'll say. So I think that's, that's contributed to a lot of the focus campaign that we had early on focusing on 75-year-olds and older and then 65-years and older, getting that, again, that vaccine penetration in the community all the way through. So we're very proud to see that, that, that worked out for our community and that, and I think that's contributing to, again, the reduction in fatalities townwide. The chart on the right is, thank you, sorry about that. The chart on the right actually shows that we have roughly 55% coverage townwide for all ages. So that includes their first dose of all ages and something that we were running the numbers in the office and we found interesting that, you know, realistically, 55% is, is pretty good considering that 14% of the population in the town at this point does not qualify for the vaccine just based on age. So we looked at our population from zero to 15 years old, and it's roughly 14%. So again, we're moving in the right direction. I expect by the end of the week, we'll be in the 60% range when the state updates their numbers on Thursday, and we'll be pushing to that 70%, 75% marker, I would think towards the end of May. So I think at this point, we're doing quite well as a municipality. Again, two other charts showing ages from 15 to 44 and then from 45 to 64. From 45 to 64, we've already reached 66% of our total population has had their first dose. And again, we're doing quite well with ages 15 to 44 actually having 43% of their individuals having their first dose. We actually held, there was a clinic held for school-aged students in town for age 16 and older on Friday and Saturday this week, so we're hoping that that was something that was able to increase our numbers in that area. And again, so I think we're doing quite well with, with getting vaccine out to our residents. These are the overall statistics. 25,000 roughly 279 residents have received their first dose. And again, these are our numbers. I recognize that. And where they, I think they come up with 100% because I think we'd recognize that there's probably, so you know, people that have not been vaccinated that are 65 and older is when the way it was posed to us is when the vaccine numbers are recorded, they base it on zip code. And actually, we have more individuals that have been vaccinated in that age group that reported in our zip code than we have people in that age bracket. So actually, when you look at the state numbers, it shows almost 130% of our 65-plus population has been vaccinated. We recognize we can't do that statistically, but again, it just shows that we're doing quite well. And again, 66% of our residents in that 45 to 64-year-old bracket have been vaccinated. Reopening updates, this was something that is, you know, obviously big news in the last few weeks, so I did want to make note of it. What we're seeing now, and again, just to kind of reiterate, the executive orders that were done last year by the governor actually made sector guidance and social distancing and certain parts of the reopen guidance actually known as B1 nuisance complaint violations in the Public Health Code, and that's how we had the ability to enforce these different mandates and restrictions throughout the pandemic is they actually had by executive order made in a public health violation in the Public Health Code. What we're seeing now is, as the governor described, most if not all sector rules will be eliminated by May 19th, and the phase out is going to start on May 1st. And again, just on May 1st, just to kind of summarize, some of the curfews are going to be rolled back an hour. Bars are going to be able to start to open without food service. I know that was something that was a big, big thing early on for outdoor only. Some of the table limits will be lifted for outdoor use only. And then again, on two, two and a half weeks later, it appears all the remaining business restrictions will end, but it does appear that there will be some, some type of guidance or I think an executive order or some type of legislative action regarding masking indoors for at least the next 30 days beyond that, probably longer, in hopes that the rates will continue to drop into the summer. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. And again, we're trying to still provide guidance for a lot of these, for the sector guidance rules, even when they expire, we're still trying to give best recommendations that we can at this point to try and still limit spread in the community. But again, it's the executive orders expiring did change it from a recommend, from a mandate to a recommendation. So that's something that we've been trying to stress when talking to folks. But obviously, we want to make sure that we're doing as many best practices as we can. So, so thank you. Sorry to be a little longer than usual.
Quite all right. So. First question for you, Mr. Sunitelli, is from Counselor Zandry.
How you doing, Stephen?
I'm doing well, Counselor Zandry. How are you?
Good. And now I have two questions because of something you just said, but that's, that's okay. That's why you're here to answer these questions. So you, you identified the fact that all of the executive orders that came down from Hartford, you were able to enforce them because they were basically a violation of health rules. So now you identified that once we get to May, I think it was 19th, once we get to that point, that basically everything is lifted except the masking requirement. So this is not, on the 19th, it is not a recommendation. It is still a requirement. So if, if there is a place that's not doing it or people that are not doing it in a particular place, how is there going to be any enforcement if it's no longer a mandate?
So I think what's going to happen is the the sector guidance are going to be technically recommendations at that point. They're not going to be enforceable through the Public Health Code. However, I do believe that there will be there'll be something that comes out of the legislature that will make just the indoor masking requirement a public health violation. There's going to be some teeth to that, I assume, because that seems to be, you know, obviously, there's a lot of news today about the outdoor masking for vaccinated individuals and so again, I think that that's going to happen. There's supposedly going to be some wording coming out from the State Health Department and/or the governor's office on the indoor masking. So I think that'll be one thing we may have for a little bit longer.
All right. Well, when I'm, as I assume you'll be back for future updates, at least in the near term, if you get some guidance on that or a more definitive outline, if you could give that to us, that would be great because I know that there's, there's a push on that piece because again, is it a mandate? Is it a requirement? Is it a recommendation? And then at what, at what point do we get people? Oh, no, no, it's a requirement. I heard it. I know it. This way we've got an outline from you.
I think the murkiest area right now is outdoor mask wearing. And initially, when the governor had made the announcement about lifting the requirement for masking outdoors, it was prior to CDC's updated interim guidance that came out today, which was slightly different, little more targeted, focused on certain venues. And so that's something that we're going to have to keep in mind as we move forward. So I believe the governor stated today that he was going to keep his mask policy at least in line with the CDC to this point.
Okay, great. And then my, my original question, I'm seeing that there are some clinics in neighboring towns that are permitting walk-ins. Now, there's no longer the requirement for an appointment. Do you have any, you know, insight as to whether anything in Wallingford will come up with something like that, or are we trying to do that through the Health Department? Do you know of any of the clinics that are in town that are going to open up to just walk-ins at this point?
As far as walk-ins go, I think what may happen is you may see the mega site in town start to do that. What we tried to do was go after the populations that were not going to be served otherwise because at this point, there is no, and there is not an entity at this point to serve the homebound. There is not an entity at this point to go after some of the vulnerable populations in town that are mobile. So we had to make a decision as to how we were going to try to approach this moving forward. So we went big for a few months. We tried to get as many people done as we could. And then once more operators came on, you're stopping shops, Walgreens, RiteAid's, the mega site, then we started to look at where were the gaps? And it was quite clear, looking at, you know, where the vaccinations were going, that we, there were certain areas that, you know, the Health Department needed to target, and that's why we ended up going to SCOW, going to the Housing Authority. And again, we were gonna, we had other clinics scheduled with Johnson and Johnson. Obviously, now we had to reevaluate that and start, you know, our planning again because it's a little bit different logistically to plan two vaccination clinics 28 days apart as opposed to one and done. So we had to take a pause for a little bit and then reevaluate, but I think we're still going to be going out and doing homebound and mobile sites for the next at least month or so. However, I will say, demand has dropped, it seems nationwide as well as statewide.
Yeah, and I think that's part of where my question is coming from because, you know, once, once in a while, we'll see suddenly like, you know, mainly on Facebook, hey, you know, such and such location has leftover vaccine. If anybody's available and want to drive on down now, they're just giving anybody a shot. So we've got no real good way to communicate with people. Hey, Stop and Shop's got something available right now. CBS has got something available right now. And like I said, I was, I was looking at NBCConnecticut.com and there's a lot of like Departments of Health in different towns that are no longer requiring the appointments. And I, and I, you know, again, it was, and you, you basically did answer how your department is still approaching it, but I was wondering, like I said, in combination of what you, you, your department might be able to do in the future, next two weeks, next four weeks, and/or anything you might be hearing about any of our local clinics. You know, the larger partners maybe start to do something that is going to be just walk in like, hey, come get your flu shot, regular flu shot. You know, as you find this out, or if you suddenly realize that you're going to do it, if you could kind of update us to that as well, that would be great because I'd like to try to get that information out. I hate to see a situation where, you know, we've got an opportunity to let people just go without an appointment, get, you know, missed or passed by because we don't have a way to disseminate the information.
Understood. And I think really what's holding us back at this point is Moderna had, you know, it comes in vials of 10. So if we open it up and no one shows or we don't have enough people to come, which has happened on some of these sites where they've had walk-ins, they end up wasting vaccine, and that's a concern of ours. And so we've been looking from this, some guidance from the state as to, you know, what's acceptable at this point, you know, if I get six people out of the 10, is that okay? Because that makes it a lot easier for us. If it was a single dose vial similar to flu, it would be, we would, we would probably open up something like that quite readily because it would just Because it would just be, you know, people could just show up and that would be easy. But we tend to try and schedule people in blocks of ten, just so we know that we're not going to waste anything at this point. But I, I understand that. I think in certain parts of the state where. There is some, there, there are lower rates of vaccination, there is going to be more need. And I think that's another way to try and remove barriers to people. But again, we've, we've decided at this point, at least for the short term, to go after folks where they live and where they reside the most. But again, that's, that is something that's on the table.
Awesome. No, and the explanation makes sense as well. So that, those are both my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any other requests for questions or comments in the chat bar from the council. Anyone from the public have a question for Mr. Civitelli? And anyone on the telephone have a question for Mr. Civitelli? Apparently not. You get to skate. Thank you for your hard work on behalf of our town and. Keeping this experience going as smoothly as reasonably possible.
We're going to keep trying and hopefully things will progress over the summer and we'll be in a much better position. So thank you, everyone in the council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is item seven, to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on an ordinance. I hereby convene the public hearing for the four hundred and sixty thousand dollar appropriation and bond authorization. For the school system capital improvement program phase four. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance? And to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Fishbein. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Laughen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion to read the title is passed. An ordinance appropriating four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for school system capital improvement program phase four. And authorizing the issue of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation. And pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Before I ask for comments from the public, it would be helpful if someone from the administration. Could let us know what we're going to spend this money on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yes, Jim Bose is here with me and he will talk about the purpose for the appropriation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. There's actually four projects that they're talking of. Let me see. I'm sorry, three. Oil tank removal. And replacement at Moran Middle School. The same at Lyman Hall High School. So I guess you would call that a second one. Remove or replace the gas tank and pump at the service building. And design and build a new elevator at Sheehan High School. Well, those are the four projects.
Those do sound familiar. I think we've heard about them before.
Yes, this is what we're calling phase four of the Board of Education Capital Improvement Program bonded.
Thank you. That matches the title of the ordinance.
I was just testing you.
Are there any comments from the public, please? I see nothing in the chat bar. Let me check the phones. And no one on the phones. With that, I call the public hearing closed. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance appropriating four hundred and sixty thousand dollars? For the school system capital improvement program phase four and bond authorization be adopted? Moved by Counselor Laughen. I think that was Counselor Marone with a second. With that, we'll begin the council discussion. The first question comment I have is from Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose, being that this is such a small amount of money, do we intend to actually bond this or are we going to pay for this out of savings?
Yes, we will probably bond this.
Is there, would there be a mechanism at this point to move money, say, some of the, the unencumbered funds in the cap and non to handle this project? As opposed to bonding this small amount of money?
You're asking, can that be done? Yes. I wouldn't advise it right now. On the sign fund balance, as you know, has slipped a little bit from two thousand nineteen to the audit of two thousand twenty. So I really don't want to put too much stress on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Shrtell is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, now I have two questions, both for Mr. Bose. I guess I'm following up on some Marone. I thought Counselor Marone was asking about cap and non, not about the fund balance.
My interpretation was that he was asking about the fund balance, unless I misinterpreted.
Okay, fine. Is the, okay, my, my other question is, is more of a historical one. This is phase four. I want to say for phases one to three. A little over twelve million. Eight years, is that roughly?
My apologies. Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Mr. Shrtell. Yeah, I, I believe that's somewhere in the ballpark. I could do a summary for the council if you would like. That's certainly very easy to do.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, no, my intention was not, it, it, I think my intention was to, was to draw attention to the fact that. This is, even though it's a lot of money, it goes under the radar in terms of school funding. And over the years, a lot of attention is paid to the, the school budget. I mean, we all know the, the operating budget for the schools is two thirds of the town budget. This is, this is money on top of that money. This is a program that has benefited this. I'm all for this. I think this is great. I just want to point it out. I, I guess more for the public, this is. You know, in, in the, over the, since we started doing this, I think I, Joe and I were on the Board of Ed the first year this capital improvement program began. So it, it's, it's a win-win. It leverages the credit rating. And it knocks off, many of these items are in the school board strategic plan, and that's how we, we fund them. And I just think it, it often. You know, there, there's just lots of debates nationally and locally. Oh, we don't fund education enough. Well, here is funding. You know, twelve to thirteen million dollars in the last seven or eight years for these types of things. So I just, I really just wanted to call attention to that. It's a good thing and we're lucky to be able to do it. So that's all. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I find myself in the uncomfortable position of agreeing with Counselor Shrtell for once. But anyway, moving on from there. I, why are we bonding this? I mean, it seems like, I mean, just to tag on to what Counselor Marone had to say. You know, over that period of time at any interest rate. Why should the taxpayers have to borrow to do this project?
Well, to Jim Bose here, obviously, just to expand a little bit. About my answer to Alton and Marone. There's two choices. We get bond authorization or we pay for it basically with a. Out of tax dollars or on a free fund balance. These, these projects certainly qualify for bonding day of an estimated useful life that will exceed the bond. These will be shorter term when we do sell the bonds issued. This fortune of it won't be twenty years, of course, which is the legal. Maximum here in Connecticut. These will be much more short term, maybe, maybe between eight, ten, something. I would fifth in the overall bond issue that'll, that remains to be seen. But I, I agree with your point, Counselor Fishbein, that. Why are we, if we are paying interest for twenty years, is that really the way to go? So I, I agree with that point, but these will be a little bit shorter, shorter term than that.
And, and what shorter term are we talking?
Oh, gosh, I, I don't see anything greater than ten years. I, I say between five and ten.
Okay, and.
It, it depends on the whole bond issue itself. This would be a piece of it. Obviously, you, you want to try to get some of these small things paid off a little bit earlier on the schedule, if you will, the repayment schedule. Because like you said, you try to match up the, the life with, with the estimated useful life of, of the asset. With the life of the bonds as best you can. So that, that's basically what we try to do.
Well, and you should also be balancing the positives and negatives of. Financing versus not financing. I mean, as any business would do, right? So if we're going to borrow four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a period of seven years. As opposed to depleting, let's say, our reserves by, what, two and a half percent maybe? I would think that that's part of the analysis that goes into place. But who's? So, Mr. Bose, you were originally, in response to the question, you're, you're pretty sure we're going to bond this. That's all that's before us tonight. It's really not, it's, it's the vehicle.
That's correct.
And I, I know I saw Mr. Fazi on the call before, but he doesn't appear to be on here now. Is there a reason why he jumped off or? Okay, I just don't, I'm looking at all the people up on the board and I, and I don't see him on. So I suppose a question for Mr. Fazi, if I may. How? Sir, are you compensated as a result, you know, if, if the, if the town had said, we're going to write a check. I would expect, Mr. Fazi, that you would not be involved tonight. So what is the increased expenditure to the taxpayer as a result of this, at least preliminary decision? To bond and thereby having you present tonight?
Joe Fazi, Bond Counsel. Let me see if I understand the question. Are you asking how I get compensated? If no bonds are issued for this project or if bonds are issued for this project?
That's a good question and perhaps both ways. If it's the determination of this body that perhaps not bonding it would be. To the benefit of the taxpayer, are you compensated? How much? And if this body passes what's before us and the bonds are issued, as has been represented to us. How much would you be compensated?
I get paid by the issuance, so an issue up to five million dollars would be seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, so up to five, five million. So you would get seventeen thousand dollars if bonds. For four hundred and sixty thousand dollars as contemplated under this resolution, this process here tonight. That would be the compensation to you.
To answer the question, yes, although I could tell you that the town would never have a bond issue for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so. I thought, well, I mean, I. I heard Mr. Bose asked whether or not these bonds are going to be issued. And he said they would be, and I think I reiterated that through my question of him. Am I to understand that the bonds won't be issued? I'm just trying to figure out what.
Let me clarify. I understand your, your question. These bonds, if they're issued, will be part of a larger issue. Which is what I meant by saying that an issue of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars would never occur. These bonds, if issued, will be part of a larger issue.
And do you know what larger issue? As you said here tonight?
I don't, but Mr. Bose might be able to answer that.
It'd be somewhere in the area of seven to eight million dollars.
Okay, so. I guess going back to Mr. Fazi, since that's over the five million dollar cap. What would be your compensation as a result of that increase over the five million dollar cap?
Twenty-three thousand dollars would be the fee.
Okay. And. I guess back to Mr. Bose. Do you generally, what other projects do you anticipate this being lumped in with? To make it to that level?
We have the second phase of the townwide communication system, the final phase of that. We have the final phase of the Board of Education Capital Improvement Program Phase Two. Which had primarily to do with window replacements at four or five schools. And I do beg your pardon, I, I don't remember which ones, as well as the complete renovation of the auditoriums. And I believe those were at both high schools and both middle schools, so it was quite a large one. But that's going to be probably the tail end of that as well. There's some for phase three of the Board of Education SIP. Because they have started to spend down and actually completed some of those work, some of that work. Those were boilers, I believe, at several of the schools, if I remember correctly. Again, another small authorization. Off the top of my head, those are the ones that really, oh, I'm sorry. And once we come up with the sales price for the purchase of the police building. We will probably throw that in the pond issue as well. Because that's going to be, as soon as that authorization becomes effect per our charter. Which is, I think, in just a couple more weeks or a few more weeks, I believe. But that'll be included in there as well.
Well, and I can understand that because that was a recent one. But the boilers and the gym renovations. Those were approved quite a long time ago, I thought.
They weren't the gym renovations, they were the auditorium renovations. It doesn't really matter when it comes to the bonding, it's when something is authorized. It's more, when are we spending the money to try to match the inflow of the revenues from the bond sale? With the set, with the expenditure of the funds. In other words, the cash going out the door. And you're correct, that money was authorized several years back. And there was a whole litany of projects on there. And several of the smaller ones had been knocked off by the school system first. And then the windows and the auditoriums took, I'm going to say at least two fiscal years. Or more to actually design, plan and reconstruct. Oh, that's, and frankly, those, those projects basically just ended with regards to the cash out the door. The release of retained and things of that nature. But yeah, your, 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 your memory is pretty good, Craig. Because, but if something gets authorized, they, it, it may not start for another year or so. Because but if something gets authorized, they it 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 may not start for another year or so. So it it really depends on when the cash is going out the door, because we are basically replenishing the town's cash when we issue these bonds.
And when you say cash out the door, does that mean that the work is done, it's been paid for?
Or it's 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 matching the payment, it's matching. As as a cat, as we are paying vendors and contractors to do the work, we then sell bonds. Sometimes we are pretty close to a project completion, and then we sell the bonds to re basically replenish our cash at that point. What that does is it it also buys us another year where we pay off another year's amortization of principal and interest. So sometimes it fits, it 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 just makes it fit into the debt schedule a lot better without causing too much havoc on the bill rate. I like to do that. Wallingford has done that quite well for for, oh, gosh, for decades now, so it it that's what I try to do, Craig, is to is to cause as least havoc to the mill raiders I can.
But so what I'm hearing is that we have Project X that's approved for bonding by the council that we actually pay for Project X with cash reserves, but then we bond in order to replenish those cash reserves. Is is that what I'm hearing?
If you, not all the time, it depends on the project. For example, if 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 we just go back a little bit in our memories to the eleven school renovation project, massive cash being sent out the door every month, especially in the summer months, when the schools were closed and the contractors were going on all of it as well. It was sort of a different phases of that construction wise, but the time we were bleeding cash big time, so we bonded, I believe, four times. My predecessor, I think, sold one lot of bonds on those for those projects, and I sold, I believe, at least two, maybe three to match as best we can and or recoup some of the cash that's going out the door. But I would caution, if you wouldn't mind, Craig, use or try to think of the word cash only, not cash reserves. But it's 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 the cash that we have to operate the town and all its functions. It really depends on, for example, let's take the something current, the police station that you both approved a couple meetings back, right? Now, if that if that's really gonna start costing twenty million dollars, we're gonna bond that in in pieces over the over the project life, and there will be the some of these other little projects to leave this one that we're talking about tonight, depending upon when the schools do those projects, et cetera, et cetera. But that might be tacked on with those bond issues. But with that, it's gonna be more of a matching of what's going out the door and what we're anticipating going out the door in in a very rapid fashion. You know what I mean? I I hate that I hate to not be able to give you a uniform answer because there's it really isn't a cookie cutter answer for that for the question.
No, I no, I understand, and I appreciate. I mean, I do stand on the cash reserves because, you know, basically eighty percent of your income happens in two months of the year. And then you take that, make it for the future month expenditures, or you have money that you're sitting on. It's not like you're selling widgets and I've got to sell a thousand widgets so that I can make payroll at the end of the week, right? So you are, in effect, taking money from reserves because of the major influx of your revenue happening within basically two months of the year. So that's how I use that that phrase. But anyway, I I appreciate the extreme.
Yep, I understand, and I I I get you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Counselors Andrew. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Bose. I I believe that Counselor Marone asked, and I'm not sure, I'm I'm pretty sure, but I mean, I'm gonna ask anyway. What are the remaining funds in the cap and nonrecurring account? I know that there was a a number of projects that were completed and there were funds left over and they're sitting there idle. What what are is the total of those funds that are unspent and are no longer aligned for any projects?
Gosh, honestly, Councilman, I I don't have that number with me. However, I do believe I stated that on the report that I sent out to you folks. I I guess in late March, I believe, that if if another councilman has that, I and and knows and wants to help, I'll please, please feel free to. But I believe it was someone somewhere in the area of one point eight to two million dollars. I I but I I I can't tell you for sure, Jason.
Yeah, that's that's fine, because I can I can work with the one point eight. If we if we were going to utilize four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that one point eight million dollars, that doesn't affect our reserves out of the general fund balance whatsoever. It doesn't affect taxes at all. And why wouldn't we use them in this case instead of bonding this small amount or even in consideration of a a larger package that we're gonna put together, shim this piece off? We've already got a big enough package, it sounds like, down the road to justify a decent bond so that it makes it a worthwhile expenditure. This four hundred and sixty thousand dollars isn't really going to affect it either way, really, for the validity of actually doing it. But it would save the small amount of interest we actually pay on the bonds because we have such a great credit rating. We've got one point eight million dollars. Why wouldn't we allocate some of that? These are capital types of expenses. They fit hand in glove with the money that's left over.
I don't disagree, but the ordinances that have created, going back to the early sixties and following through all the way up to recently, have stated that the the funds shall not be used for school purposes.
All right, so let me put it to you a different way. If we voted no on this on this ordinance, we would still need to come up with four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we could do so out of the cap and nonre- uh, nonrecurring account, correct?
No, it it because the ordinance is that, and there are several, there's maybe five of them that the the first one that created the cap and nonrecurring fund and then a slew that came down the pike in the fifty or sixty years since then have have stated that there is for infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, excluding schools. So I think the cap and nonrecurring would sort of be unusable for school projects.
So I I I don't know if I if I understand that. I and I mean, it's a capital project. We have cap and nonrecurring, and we can't use it for a capital because it's in the school? Is it is it really for the school or is it
I'm just repeating what's in the ordinance.
Okay, but I mean, so let me stretch a little farther on it. It it this is not really a school project per se. This is work that the town needs to do on on buildings that the town owns that happen to be schools.
Yeah, I I I'm I'm not going there, to be honest with you.
All right, well.
I I know, I just don't feel comfortable giving you guidance that tends, in my view, to 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 go against what's in the ordinance. I I don't want to do that, Jason. You know me better than that.
All right, well, I I I'm gonna, that was my question, so to speak, and I guess I'm gonna listen to the rest of the discussion because, to me, I'm I'm looking at the fact that we've got one point eight million dollars that's sitting out here that could go to some things. I'm I'm looking to do things with it like this, like make it part of the some downward pressure on this tax increase that we're seeing in part of the budget that's coming up. So obviously, we can't take this money out and use it for operating costs to lower the taxes. So I'm looking for a reason to consume this on a cap and nonrecurring thing. This seems perfect, and it seems like it's being excluded. I I'd like to look into whether it's really excluded or not. So I'll I'll, that was my only question, and I'll I'll kind of listen for other folks to chime in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So so my question, Mr. Bose, is along the lines of, so the so I I guess shame on me for having been in the council for so long and not realizing that the bonds were aggregated before they were sold. So the legal authority to issue a bond as an asset from the perspective of the town financially, correct?
I'm so I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't hear the question.
Oh, that's all right. I I can repeat. So the the ability to issue a bond on the purpose of the town, the legal authority to issue a bond as an asset from the town perspective, correct?
Yes.
So does it appear somewhere in our, like, monthly financial report where those assets would be?
No, because you're talking more of a balance sheet item. The items that you receive in the mail or email from us with regards to the monthly expenditures and revenue reports are basically what we call, you know, revenue and expenditure reports. If you were in business, you would you would call it a profit and loss in on the in the business world.
So would there be a way to find out how much money we have that we haven't bonded, but we have legal authority to bond?
Yes, actually, I think there's a, I don't have the audit with me, but I can look that up and I can send you an email as to where that is in our audit report.
It's in the audit report that I can find it. I can find it in there. Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, Joe, if you don't let me know, and I'll I'll try to pick it up for you.
Okay, thank you. So now that we know that the bonds are aggregated and sold, why not aggregate the bond hearings and meetings and why and whatnot? I I know some towns will bond multiple projects at the same time. Why wouldn't we consider? Because obviously, the school project is phase four, right? So during the first, you know, we knew that this was coming from a ways back. So if the intent is not to distribute the bond or sell the bond soon, why not just aggregate all the bond hearings for a given year into one meeting and have one public hearing and so on?
Well, I think because you be you, I think you said that before, the last phrase you used with regards to authorization, or maybe it was Councilman Fishbein, I I don't recall. You are authorizing, it it it's not just a a financial transaction. Frankly, it's just as much illegal. And once the council votes to authorize a bond issue, then, you know, we have to wait the same thirty days, and then when that occurs, then it after the referendum period, then we're we're good to go with it after thirty days. So by just waiting for once a year, I I I think you're gonna have some timing issues with the things that need to get done at a certain time.
So I I guess my concern is, as as an individual council person, it's hard. It's hard to get a handle on a lot of these issues, because we have these hearings a lot, and and by a lot, I don't know, maybe three or four times a year, right? To where we bond different items, and you're never entirely certain what the monies, when the bonds are issued, or when the money gets spent, and so on. So I guess the annual audit is sort of the answer to my question.
Yes, there is. There is quite a bit of information in there, but if but if there's something there, then it doesn't stand out. Give me or my deputy, Tim Senna, a scream, and we'll be glad to pull that together.
So it it seems, though, that if we were to have one, so every time we have a hearing, right, we have to pay Attorney Fozzie, we have to pay for a notice in the paper. It just seems like you could, I mean, you're not saving huge dollars, but you save small dollars by doing all these at one time. I I would assume that, like, this one we knew was coming years ago, right? So we really could have issued this bond, you know, with phase, we could have issued all four phases at once, could we not?
No, you have to match the the cash inflow from the revenue sale, from the bond sale that with your your expenditure. For example, if I sold bonds today and we did not spend the funds for years down the road, then there that becomes a legal question as to arbitration, I'm sorry, arbitrage type of matters whereby you can actually have the tax exempt status of your bonds called into question. And I'll let attorney Joe Fozzie chime in a little bit on that. Joe, if you don't mind?
Sure, Joe Fozzie, Bond Counsel. The timing of the authorizations and the timing of the issuance of the bonds is really project driven. So that the authorizations typically do not occur unless the projects are somewhere within the near term of being planned or implemented. So in the example of a five-year capital plan, the five-year capital plan looks out five years, but what's gonna happen in the fifth year or the fourth year, or the third year for that matter, or even the second year is often a guess, and a guess that's made for planning purposes. So towns across the state authorize the capital plans, capital improvement programs like Wallingford does once a year for the projects that are in the term of the immediate year typically. Some aspect of it, either the design or the actual project will occur or begin to occur within one year. In terms of bonding for for for, for example, five years of capital improvement programs at one time, the Internal Revenue Code imposes restrictions on the issuance of tax-exempt debt. And those restrictions require that there are contracts in place or to be in place equal to ten percent of the amount of the debt that's proposed to be issued, that the projects are all going to proceed with due diligence, and that there is a reasonable expectation that eighty-five percent of the bond proceeds will be expended within three years of the issuance of the bonds. Those criteria would be difficult, if not impossible, to meet if one were to aggregate multiple programs, multiple capital improvement programs for future years. The other reason why all bond ordinances aren't implemented or authorized at the same time is that, I go back to the phrase I used, project driven. When it becomes known that a parcel of land is going to be purchased for a police station, then that's when the bond authorization for the police station comes before the council, and that's basically how it is for just about every project. The exception might be the capital improvement plans, which is an annual process. But other than that, they're typically individual projects that have their own timeframes driven by their own needs.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Fozzie. So I guess my follow-up question to that is, so then if we're not gonna bond the the half a million dollars or so for this project right away because it's not an adequate amount, then we must have other projects in mind that we're gonna bond in the short term. Is that safe to say?
Uh, yes. Oh, sure, yes. We're gonna be bonding both projects that I had just talked about a few moments ago.
Okay, so I understand the the details, but I guess at the end of the day, I mean, I realize this is sort of a rhetorical ballet at this point, but we could have taken the police station saying this and put it all together into one bond issuance. Could we not have?
No, I I
This is Joe Fozzie. Yeah, the the projects, major projects have to be authorized on their own. You don't combine different standalone projects into one authorization.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, Counselor Testa.
I'm actually gonna pass right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back to Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a a wrap-up question from Attorney Fozzie. Just to, just so that I know, so if bonds are not sold in a given year, let's say, are you compensated by the town?
Typically not. Sometimes, sometimes Mr. Bose will ask me to submit a bill because he has funds in the legal column left over, and I will submit a bill for that.
Okay, and is that for the purposes of sucking up what's left in the account, or I'm trying to figure out why why would, if money is left in an account and it isn't ordinarily a billable event, why a bill would be generated in order to cause an expenditure from that line if it was unnecessary under cause an expenditure from that line if it was unnecessary under ordinary means?
Well, I'm not sure that unnecessary is the word. Uh it reduces the subsequent bond issue fee. So it's applied against and reduces the subsequent fee that I quoted to you earlier.
And it's also the uh compliment, uh just to try to get things as best we can in the correct fiscal year. That's uh another thing. And Joe's Attorney Fozzie normally bills when we issue bonds. And sometimes we don't issue bonds every year. We issue them probably more like every other. So that's another thing that I like to just try to stay on top of if we can. And like and like Attorney Fozzie said, uh that does reduce the, you know, when we do bond and we get his bill, those payments that have been made, of course, in the, you know, more of the proper fiscal year have already been reflected and are no longer and are not part of that uh that invoice.
Is there some sort of contract that documents this forward payment? Because Attorney Fozzie is not, is it in effect a forward payment if there's money left in the account?
No, it's not. It's not a forward payment. He's he's done the work. He's done the work in the fiscal year in which the expenditure is being charged. So it's not. It's not a forward payment. So Joe has a very bizarre way of billing.
Well, that's not very comforting. So but if, okay, so under this scenario, seven, we'll say five million dollars in bonding is actually going to physically happen next year. Therefore, incurring expenditure for the taxpayers of seventeen thousand dollars next year when the bonds are issued, right? That's the scenario we're talking about here. Generally.
Now, the bonds are probably going to be issued this fiscal year.
Okay, but I'm I'm getting
If you're if you're setting up a different scenario, sure, that could happen, of course.
Well, I'm trying to figure out the scenario where at the end of the the fiscal year, there's money left in the account and a bill is requested for work that is essentially going to be done the following year. I mean, and that's the only way I can figure this out because the bonds would be issued next year. There would be a debt by the town of seventeen thousand dollars as a result of the five million dollars in bonds. So you're making a payment towards that debt that would get incurred the next year. Is that that situation? Otherwise, why are you paying in advance?
We're not paying in advance. We're paying it when the work was performed.
Okay.
Can I can I chime in here? This is Joe Fozzie.
Sure.
So um there's a general conception that Bond Counsel works when bonds are issued, but really, there's a lot going on uh over the course of a year. Besides authorization, there's regulatory compliance work. Jim and I interact with or the Finance Office and I interact with some regularity. So it's not quite accurate to say that the work gets done when the bonds are issued. Certainly, that's an accurate statement, but it's not a complete statement. The complete statement is Bond Counsel advises the town over the course of time, including the issuance of the bonds, but preceding and after the issuance of the bonds.
Okay, so I I get not to, I because I we're a little bit down the rabbit hole, but right now is there compensation for attendance at tonight's meeting? Or is that just lumped into the that blanket lump sum payment when the bonds are issued?
The latter. It's lumped in.
Okay, so going back, Mr. Bose, to the prospect that the reserves in the cap and non-recurring, which are approximately one point eight, can't be used for this project. I think you said that in the ordinance, it says that the money can't be sent spent for schools. Is that what you said?
That was something that I had read in along the uh the years of the ordinances, correct?
Okay, so I'm looking at the ordinance. And it says that the creation and the purpose, it says it's the objective of this fund to provide financing of necessary capital improvements in the town of Wallingford, including but not limited to school building construction, other municipal buildings, highways and sewer systems. So aren't the projects that we're talking about today full, you know, clearly, they're not building a school. But they have to do with capital improvements onto those buildings. And they fall within that that general concept, right? I don't see anywhere in here it says it can't be spent on schools.
I don't I don't have the ordinances in front of me, but um I'm going to have to go back and read them and point them out, but it is somewhere in there, or at least it was where I read it.
Okay, well, assuming that it's not in there. And even if it was, quite frankly, I think through the budget process, we could get this done if that's the intent, but um why couldn't we, assuming that it's not in there, why couldn't we just take the money from there? Other than I I believe it calls for a mayor's recommendation, which, you know, that's the flag that many times thrown out here, but is there another reason why that money that's being sat on can't just be used to write a check for this these projects?
Yeah, Mayor talking. You know, this is all about management of the town's assets. It's a major process. The Finance Department is saddled with making sure we have cash to handle a lot of things. Cash is advanced on a lot of things. And it's a management of it to make sure that we have the assets necessary in the right place during the course of a year. As a typical rule, school projects are bonded. And one of the concerns over the years has been that the cap and not non-program not be dominated by school projects. They could easily absorb all of the funding we have in cap and non, and nothing else would get done. So it's management, when 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 you have cash to advance, when you need bonding, et cetera. The town is balancing many things, including a forty million dollar, sixty million dollar phosphorus project that involves a lot of the same issues. So we're doing the same thing that's been done for decades, and it's been very successful. I don't understand what is the great concern here about the efforts and the expertise of our Finance Department, which is guided as well? What is the big concern that something is wrong here? This is not an issue that goes out by itself. It's combined with others so that it's an attractive package for those who invest and buy bonds. There's a whole expertise with regard to what you package, what the terms of that package are, et cetera. We pay for some of that expertise from Attorney Fozzie as well. I I I mystified as to what what is the problem we're trying to solve here? There isn't a problem. We're looking to move business as we customarily have. It's been very successful. And unless someone can point to some glaring problem in it, which I am not aware of, we're looking to it be able to make improvements to the schools. And at this point, the process would be approval of this ordinance.
Okay, so I guess the answer to the question is no, there is no other reason why we couldn't do that. But I'm looking once again at the ordinance. And and we're not talking about new expenditures. We're not talking about new money. We're not talking about tax increases. We're talking about money that is left over in this account that is not being utilized. We're not getting benefit of it. It's just sitting there. And when we look at forty-six dash eight of our ordinances, it says any unexpected portion of any such appropriation remaining after completion of the particular project shall revert to the fund. So the question is, once it's there, you know, what if there's fifty million dollars in the cap and non-recurring account that over time has accumulated? We just going to sit on it? We're going to bond other projects? Are we going to make the taxpayers pay interest when we're sitting on this money that's left over from these other projects? No, we do the fiscally prudent thing and we say, this is a relatively small expenditure. We're sitting on one point eight million dollars in this account that's left over. And maybe it would be appropriate to use this money instead of bonding, instead of borrowing and paying more. That's the way businesses look at these things. That's how successful businesses look at these things. So you know, I think that may be an appropriate thing to do here. But I once again point out that, you know, it does require a recommendation of the mayor under the under the ordinance. So um you know, based upon what I'm hearing, I don't think we get there. Perhaps the ordinance needs to be modified, um but I think I have the answers to the questions that I asked. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find myself in the uncomfortable position of agreeing with Counselor Fishbine. Um you know, there is no problem here. The the only problem is that we've got cash and we won't use it. And one point eight million dollars is left over. Now, I just want to kind of identify what that one point eight million dollars is. These these are funds unspent from projects that are closed. They are not intended for anything going forward except to be sitting here. We cannot use cap and recur non-recurring money anywhere else in the budget for anything else except capital expenditures. This is in perfect alignment with what we could do here. And we're resisting it because we we want to put it together. We just got done talking about putting together this this little piece of it into another package so that, you know, it looks good for seven or eight million dollars for bond purchasing. It doesn't sound like with sixty million dollars coming down the road, we're going to be paying cash for that. So we're going to have a lot of investors coming forward to earn three percent, four percent on bond purchases for that sixty million dollars and then whatever the police station costs. So when we've got an opportunity to shave off a little bit of it, I would think that that would be a prudent thing to do. If we've got this cash, it's already allocated. It never got spent on the original programs that it was meant to be spent on because costs came in line, uh contingencies weren't used, all the good things, all the good things. So let's make another good thing out of the past good things because if I'm not mistaken, and someone can correct me, if this money is roll is left over in the cap and non-recurring, and it doesn't end up on a particular li line item, it eventually will roll back into the general fund balance. Then we're talking about money that gets put into the general fund balance. And I might be wrong about that. And if I'm wrong, it's still just going to get pushed aside. And we're we're pushing all kinds of cash aside every year now. We've got carryover funds, appropriations in force, one percent and two percent accounts. Used correctly and properly, they are of a major benefit to keeping taxes down and to and to keep from unnecessary spending of, oh, my God, we're going to we're going to lose it. Let's buy fifty cases of paper. But all that being said, this money is already there. This money is left over. And and if we worked creatively and within the confines of of rules and ordinances and laws, we likely could execute out of that one point eight, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars and not have to bond this thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think perhaps uh this is a as a matter of uh us not asking the the right questions of the administration. And I look at that balance um similar to my colleagues in that, well, there it is. We should be able to use it on other projects, and I don't think anybody disagrees with that. Perhaps the administration has other plans for that money. And that might fall in line with uh an overall administrative philosophy over the years of not utilizing that on-school fund funding overall, whether it's in the ordinance or not. Maybe that's part of it. Maybe this is more a matter of not enough information being shared, the questions not being asked in that way. That that's my only comment. I personally have ideas for what to do with that money myself. I'm sure all my colleagues have ideas. We all know of projects we are in favor of. And we think about, well, there's one point eight million dollars that we might apply to that project or this project. Perhaps the administration has the same thought pattern. And this project doesn't fit into that plan. Maybe they want to share that plan with us. Maybe they don't right now. Uh but I just I just think we're not asking the right questions of one another. That's my comment. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Laffin.
Thank you. Um actually, pretty much everything that Counselor Testa just said, um yeah, I think there, you know, I think we all have ideas for how to use this money. Um and and this is basically, as we've done in the past, this is to say it's okay to include this four hundred and sixty thousand dollars when we get to the point of assembling bonds. Um and and as has been discussed tonight and other nights, sometimes not everything is put into a bond package. This is just to keep all of our options open, so they have the proper authorization and the sign-offs and contracts, whatever they need to go forward um when that time comes. But uh I I think it's it's good to just keep the process moving, keep the options open uh so that the best financial package can be arranged when that time comes. And like I said, you know, we're we're all trying to take bites at this this one point eight million or whatever it is. So I I I only see a harm in in delaying this or forcing this to be the a bite off that apple right now. Thanks.
Counselor Morriganstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my take on all of our very lengthy questioning and delving into something that has been addressed previously in various ways when we've been bonding or sometimes wind up non-bonding um is that meeting from home has allowed me, um obviously, Mr. Fishbine, Mr. Zandry, probably all of us to look at the ordinance while we have been at home because we are in locations that have internet. Um so might feel off topic, but um getting working internet everywhere in Town Hall would be a benefit to our town council. And I appreciate being able to see what we're talking about um at the time that we're talking about it. And um I again really um wonder if if the way we've always done it is, in fact, the way that we should be proceeding to do it tonight. So thank you. Thank you for humoring me a bit.
Counselor Shertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh you know, I think there's a lot. I don't I completely respect and understand where Counselors Zandry, Counselor Fishbine, and Counselor Marone are coming from. But I also respect where the mayor is coming from, and this is how we've done it. And I feel like this is a the wrong battle to fight on this particular and as Counselor Testa said and and Counselor Laffin, I feel like um we all have thoughts on what to do with that money. In fact, we spent about eight hundred thousand of it last year as part of our budget. In fact, we spent about eight hundred thousand of it last year as part of our budget, zero tax increase. We actually used it, we did, the council. We defer, we did, that's one way we did it last year, not everyone agreed with it, but we did it, we're still here, we survived, the world didn't end. So, you know, I would say the budget is a place where we can make those types of things. I would not mess with this program, and since everyone was talking, just to reiterate what I said before, I found the numbers, actually, Mr. Bose, you had done this for me a few years ago, so I'll thank you. The Board of Ed Capital Improvement Phase One, we spent one point one six million. Phase Two, we bonded eleven point one million, we spent eight million. This is about, this summary is about two years old, so it, it could be different. But then in phase three was about five hundred thousand. I'm, I'm just sharing this again to show for anyone listening in the public, anyone who thinks we don't fund our schools, this is, I'm gonna say this again, this is outside of the budget the schools get, the two thirds of the town budget, the hundred and seven million. This is beyond that, this is worthy, this is good. And this is also not counting CRA funding, we also spend on the schools. Wallingford Public Schools are generously funded in this town. So I need to make that point again, so I support this, although I, I respect the other points of opposition, and Mr. Chairman, I call a question.
You know, instead of going through the process of calling the question, I will tell you, there's no further comment in the chat bar. And so in the spirit of your motion, I'm gonna call, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, okay. Fishbein.
No.
Yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
No.
Shertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes, and Chairman Servoni, this is Counselor Tada, I'm caller three, I got, I've lost my internet connection, so.
I've identified, if you look through the, the log of attendees, you're identified.
Okay, thank you.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes, I count six yeses, the motion passes. Thank you, Attorney Fozzie.
Mr. Chairman, may I, Jim Bose, in, in response to Counselor Fishbein, Craig, just reading through the ordinance here that I was able to dig up, the original ordinance, it does say we're under the category of use of funds shall not be used for school buildings. But the paragraph above that does say for school, something to do with school, school project. So I, I, I see exactly where you got your, your, your quote from, and if you just look down, you'll see where I got mine. Whether these count as school building projects to do boilers and, and underground tanks, because I, I'm not gonna go there. I know for the sixteen years I've been here, plus we, we haven't used any school projects for a cap and non-recurring fund. And I know my predecessor, well, there was a fellow here who was, who was, he was only for eight months, so I don't really count that. But the fellow who was here for some thirty plus years, I, I went back about five or six years prior to my getting here, looking at some of these things. And I did not see any school projects ever included in the cap and non-recurring, so maybe it's because of that. But I, I hope you see the method, my madness is, if you, if you just read that down a little bit, we could have, you and I could have further discussions about that, you know, later on.
Mr. Chairman, just to be, just to be clear, Mr. Bose, are you speaking about this, the sentence that says, "The proceeds of any bond issued sold to finance any portion of the town's capital improvement program except school construction"? Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct, yes, and that's.
That's totally different than.
No, no, it is not, because the cap and non-recurring fund is a bond ordinance. The projects there are authorized via a bond ordinance.
We can.
Again, yeah.
In the future.
We, we, we can, but I just wanted you, you to know where I, like I said, I had read that somewhere, that I wasn't totally crazy. Just a little bit.
We have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council, Councilmember for your, for your discussion.
The, we are done with this, this agenda item, we've adopted the ordinance, and now I need a motion to go into executive session.
Did I put it in the chat bar for anyone that wants to look at it? Thank you. I'll move, we'll go into executive session.
Is there a motion to go into executive session, please?
Moved.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have to specify the general statutes that are bringing this in. Mr. Mayor, do we have anything for item number eleven, the sale lease property?
No, Mr. Laffin, no.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes one dash two two five F, section one dash two hundred six E, section seven dash two thirty-two A, section one dash two ten B one, five B and ten, to discuss draft tax and power purchase proposal and obtain legal advice related thereto.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Who voted no?
Rattell.
Just kidding, I'm in favor.
Thank you, hearing no, none in opposition, I declare the council in executive session. If you're not participating in the executive session, please leave the meeting, thank you.
So can I get, can I get a motion to come out of executive session please?
No move.
There's a second. Moved and seconded. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed besides Chertel?
Check the Charter.
Yep. All right. I declare the council in public session and there is no further business on the agenda so we are adjourned. Thank you.